Right, welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting for the month of August 2022. I would first like to acknowledge this meeting is held on Bangalua land and we give thanks for use of the sound. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to grant thy blessing upon the works of this council, to direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of the city and for the true and lasting welfare of the people of this municipality. Amen. So I will now ask for everyone to stand. Now this is your each thing is thank you. But I'll ask you to remain standing out of respect. Thank you. We'd like to acknowledge Jane Benning, Alan Smith, Emma Liamon, Olive Ashman, John Hall, Maxine Warner, Jennifer Waitra, Roma Rillet, Michael Cooper, Richard O'Malley and Anne Bull. Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you. Right, so we're ten minutes record. We have apologies tonight from councillor Jay Marshall and leave of absences there on you. There's also a recommendation here that I would like to approve. Thank you. That councillor Marshall, Jay Marshall be granted a leave of absence for the period from the Monday the 19th of September 2022 to Friday the 14th of October 2022. Someone like to move that thing? Councillor Knox, seconded Deputy Mayor Stone. Thank you. So discussions. Ask for show of hands. All those in favour? Thank you. That has been carried. Item, got declarations of conflicts, member, members' conflicts of interest. Any councillors have any deadlines to declare? Thank you.
Yes, maybe. Yeah, I think I haven't declared. I may have a perceived conflict of interest in item 13.3.6 wire show lease, as I am a life member of the show society and therefore I'll leave the meeting for that item.
You, councillor Pond.
I also have exactly the same conflict. I'm a life member and the current president.
Councillor Westman.
I have a perceived conflict of interest for item 13.3.4. I can't be a volunteer.
Thank you. Thank you for that. CEO.
Just needed to get an indication in terms of whether councillor Westman is going to say.
Okay. Are you willing to stay in the room while we have that discussion?
Yeah.
Happy with that as well. We should still have a quorum for that. It's. Councillor Santuzi.
I've got the same. I think there's councillor Bond and Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So CEO just working us to a quorum.
With that, I assume we will not have a quorum with another councillors leading a meeting. So we will need to think about how we're going to deal with that and what advice councillor goes to have.
Okay, thank you for that.
Whilst I've got a speaker as well today, I also want to declare personal material of conflict of interest in the items 19.4.1. Deputy Mayor, I'm going to review my advice. I'll be waiting in the meeting at the time.
Well, that's fine. Thank you for that. Right, I think we've covered it for tonight. Thank you. So moving on. Right, five minutes in previous meeting. Do you have someone to move that please? Councillor Simpson, Deputy councillor Westman. Thank you. Any discussions? And I can't for a show of hands. All those in favour? Excellent. That's carried. Thank you. Right, got deputations and presentations. They're done this evening. Commissions as well. President of the House adjourned on the third. We have 9.1, former Ytech building. Two, 9.2, the final task at the Maritime Museum. Thank you. We're going to move on to 7.4, which is public question time. We don't have any, any questions tonight from the members of the public. Thank you. Right, so let's go to elected members' activities. They are up on the screen. I'll ask any councillors if they'd like to make any comments about any events that they have attended in the last month in sort of special significance or something that they would like to share. I'll ask you to do so while these are up on the screen. Please. Councillor Pond.
I just actually have an apology. I've been a little bit busy lately and I did forget my duties again. Apologies for that.
Thank you. Or anything you'd like to mention that you've been in for the last, that you've attended?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you for that. Right, councillor Santuzi.
I went to go with what is it? Celebration of life. Very nice. Quite a lot of people there.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you for that, councillors. Okay, so item 12.1, the audit committee meetings from the 18th of July. Pointing to me too, there's a recommendation there that councillor receive a note of minutes from the meeting. Some of them like to do so. For Stupus, second to councillor Simpson. Discussions on that. Right, ask for a show of hands. All those in favour? Excellent. That's carried. Thank you. Right, I'll move this go to the office of the CEOs, 13.1.1, his action report from August 2022. Recommendation is there? Are you moving that councillor Knox?
New recommendation, but I'd ask one thing as well. The landing. I had some discussions with our email. The justice, and we know that the other people aren't reading the naming of it. But we've got the office, they will get forgotten. And we re instituted into the report. So we know that there's some action going for it.
Yeah.
It's through the mayor, yes, no councillor. And councillor Knox has raised a good point that we do need to resolve the question as to what the naming convention for the landing site will be going forward. So we will bring back a report with to address that matter and include that in the action report coming forward.
Thank you. Are you seconding that councillor Westman? Thank you for that. All right, ask for a show of hands. All those in favour? It's carried. Thank you. Right. These ordinary reports from services, 13.2.1, fully report on procurement. The recommendation is there that councillor receive a note of quarterly reports. If someone moves that councillor Stupus. Excellent. Thank you. Councillor Knox, seconded?
Seconded, I'll organize a question since I allow that. The question is, we saw page 29, there's been something like 37,000 on the executive team leadership workshop. I was just wondering who the provider was and how the provider was selected.
Through the mail, to the end of table offering decisions.
Happy to speak with that now? Thank you.
Uh, thank you. The provider was Kualchawmane and they've got a longstanding relationship with local government. And understanding that government, it must felt that they would be best suited to help work with the executive management team in planning for pathway work together, but also have ownership of the whole work together.
Thank you. So I have a mover and a seconder there. Ask for a show of hands. All those in favour? That's carried. Thank you. 13.2.2, the review of finance policies. There's a recommendation there. Councillor Knox, would someone like to move that? Recommendation is the updated budget management and review policy. Item two, updated financial hardship policy to council. And three, updated asset accounting policy. Someone like to move that councillor's? Councillor Westman, thank you. Seconded councillor Simpson. Thank you. Councillor Knox.
At the grace of five, three on page 39. And it seems to me that the approval of the variation. Am I correct that overspend can be drawn from elsewhere in the budget? But there are requirements for it as.
Excellent. Um, so the the idea behind the wording was that it was within the existing, within the same area of budget, same service area. That there will often be ups and downs in delivering their services. And so that's the, the idea behind the policy is that when there is a variance within a given business unit, those can be offset in the normal course of business. So that was what we discussed with the audit committee. And they were comfortable that that's the normal practice in those councils to allow. So that it's not that it won't be reported necessarily, but it's not a getting permission in advance. That sort of thing. It's, it allows for operational efficiency where business units can then sort of offset their budgets without it affecting service delivery. That was the.
I'll just point out that that was happening going back about several years ago within a particular department of council. And the things that were going on were not satisfactory to the community. And I'm just a bit concerned about that five three. I hear what you're saying and I understand that you're, you know, we're not talking about big amounts of money. But nevertheless, that policy doesn't specify any of that. Just concerned.
Apologies, sir. In getting the, I may have not added the version that I had updated. Apologies. I think I may have added the version that I put to the audit committee. Sorry, I'm happy for you to pass, change the resolution slightly. The wording was meant to put a $50,000 on it. So I thought I had updated that, but I may have used the version I put to the audit committee. Anyway, sorry about that.
There's 50,000. How do you do that?
They can be changed. I don't have to get the wording correct for that. The councillor Knox has answered all. Councillor Stupus.
Yeah, just wanted to ask a question regarding green spaces and trees. Is that covered under the asset accounting policy? Are we going to take care of that in some way, shape or form?
Um, yes, through the chair. So what the discussion we had in the, in the audit committee on that one was, it was brought up. We had planned to change the asset accounting policy last year. But in reviewing the, what was actually being capitalized, it was very minimal amount of tree plantings that were being capitalized. And it was actually mainly irrigation that was being capitalized. And basically any amount of planting was considered immaterial. So it was decided that that wasn't actually required, change the asset accounting policy after all.
Yeah, that's true. The trees that we planted.
I'm sure about the answer.
Standing there, up to 50,000. Dogs, please, Michelle. It's up to, yeah. Thank you. So councillor Stupus.
I've answered the question.
So councillor Westman, happy with that change?
Yes, I am.
Councillor Simpson?
Yes, I am.
Um, I'll allow that. So then I'll move her into second to a show of hands. All those in favour? Excellent. That's fine. That's carried. Thank you. Thank you councillor Knox for that. Page 55, risk management update. Recommendation there. Councillor Stupus, would you like to move that? Thank you. And councillor Westman is seconding that. Thank you. Really straightforward. Take that as read. Understood. Do you have questions? Ask for show of hands. All those in favour? Thank you. 13.2.4, the monthly budget report. Recommendation is there? Are there any questions to find out? Take this read. All right, are you moving that councillor Stupus? Oh, thank you.
Uh, 786,000 in debtors. Needs to be going down, not down. Watch you get very, very close to the yard. Two or four months. Seem to have a true concern about. Those debtors being a hundred point plus days, which concerns me.
Um, it probably has been higher over the last six months, seven, because we've started invoicing. There was a change of process in how we invoice the screening funding. So previously they just paid it to us on a claim and we now have to invoice each month. And they do take about a month and a bit to pay us for the, the grant funding for the screening operations at the airport. Um, so I think that has upped the debtors amount. I think there are, there are some doubtful debts in there. You'll see within the report, there are the offsetting doubtful debts. But the bits that aren't included in doubtful are turning over quick. So there was, there's no, nothing concerning. I've seen all any increase in unclaimed amounts that we're not receiving.
And we are assuring the outstanding rate payers.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
So hopefully, just love to send that down.
Right, thank you for that councillor Stupus. Somebody moves recommendation please. Councillor Santuzi, thank you. Seconded councillor Simpson, thank you. Show of hands. All those in favour? That's carried. Thank you. Item 13.2.5, review of council members allowances and benefits. And before I start this one, I would just like to mention that it does involve the recommendation and requirements for the man to be responsible for the cost of fuel when using the vehicle, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not carrying any conflict of interest because I will not be re-elected, running for mayor for the next term. So in saying that, I won't be here when this is actually implemented. So I wouldn't give this particular recommendation. Thank you. So we have a recommendation there. Would someone like to move that recommendation? Thank you councillor Knox. Thank you. Can I have a second please? Councillor? Pond, thank you. Right, show of hands. All those in favour? That's carried. Thank you. All right, that's good. That, um, item 13.2.6, provision of animal management and rehoming services for the city of Waiara. Recommendation is there? Any questions? We think they've been read. Moving that councillor Simpson?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Seconding it councillor Knox. You've got a question?
I've got some questions as well.
I'll allow that. Thank you.
Okay, according to the reports, 247,130. I'm curious to know what it was before. And this is for animal management services. So I assume that 130,000 for rehome services is additional to that. So again, I'd like to know what it was before. And have we ever looked at how much other councils are paying for their relationships with the RSPCA?
All right, you have the intention. Take that. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, happy to have a, bring out some points on that. So you are correct. This is an increase in the, the cost of this agreement. So the 247,000 is basically the indexed version of what we had before. The new cost is the rehoming. So for the past six years, the RSPCA has managed our, our centre. And rehoming has not been a, basically charged for by the RSPCA, the service they provided, but not charged for separately. I believe the CEO of the RSPCA presented to council back in 2019 and flagged that in the future, the cost of rehoming animals, which is significant for the RSPCA, will be on charge to councils. So they'd be looking to make that change. There are a number of other councils that have cat bylaws that are currently going through this exact same process with the RSPCA and are having cost increases of a similar magnitude using the same costing structure, basically. So some of them are metres and will have be a much larger actual figure for them, but based on the same costing structure for it. So councillor obviously has a cat bylaw, which at the moment, and when we first brought it in, was probably a bit ahead of its time. There are not many councils necessarily had a cat or bylaw like that. But it's already been sort of flagged that over the next few years, the dog and cat management laws will be reviewed again with a focus on cat management, whereas currently the act really focuses on dog management. And it's not been up to councils to manage cats. That's going to be the, the changes that are coming over the next few years. So while we're a bit ahead, I guess, of the game in that space, at the moment, it will just become the norm over the coming years. Yes, and so the management governance has been worked quite closely with the RSPCA in, through this agreement and then obviously negotiated some good outcomes for council. But yes, you are correct. It is a, it's a new cost for council and it's, you know, it's not small. Yes, uh, was sort of, has been sort of incoming for a couple of years.
Deputy Mayor, it's time.
Uh, thank you, Madam Eun. Along the lines of councillor Knox, I have no qualms with the, uh, want to say RFDS. I have a middle bank. Oh, it's P C A. Thank you. I'm used to the other price. It horrifies me that we're now looking at, well, I've got the figures wrong, by 350,000 and $400,000 a year on animal management and rehoming services. Do the, the community realize this is the sort of expense we're now going to be faced with? I certainly don't support future registration fee increases to help cover that. Because all we're doing there is penalizing the good owners of dogs and cats who register and do the right thing. I guess we're going to have to look at other ways to try to reduce that. And I guess as part of this, I pose the question internally, we proactively issue infringements when they should be issued, fines when they should be made, and education programs to try to reduce that. I guess we've got no alternative to go along with it, but that is a huge amount of money. It may well ensure that we're a leading organization with best practice for professional animal management, but that is a high cost in our budget. And I don't have the answers, but I think somehow we've got to look at that. If that happens this year, what about the future years? Because it probably won't go down.
Thank you, Madam. Okay, thank you. Right, we have a mover and a seconder there. Councillor Simpson and councillor Knox. So ask for a show of hands. All those in favour? Very, thank you. 13.3, city growth reports. First, we go to community grants. With a impact on the meeting, I think, we'll make a top view in the community. So we have two, two grants requested there from the Wanderers Soccer and Social Club and also the Waiara Soccer Association, $5,000 each. Recommendation is there. You've had the, uh, the applications as well. So I'm asking for a mover. Careful this, please. Thank you councillor Santuzi. Someone like to second this? Thank you councillor Westman. Right, are there any other questions from anyone? No, okay. I'll just ask for a show of hands. All those in favour? Thank you. That's carried. Encourage all groups of community, they turn to apply for community grants. An opportunity for councillors. Thank you. 13.3.2, the expense of golf, regional assessment panel, assessment and panel members. Right, um, fairly straightforward, I think. You have the list up on the screen there and the recommendations is there. We'll move this involved. There's any questions from any of the councillors? Thank you. There you go. Yep. All right, I'll look for a mover. Is that councillor Knox? Thank you councillor Knox. And seconded deputy mayor Stone. Thank you. I'll ask for a show of hands. All those in favour? Excellent. That's carried. Thank you. Right, moving forwards. 13.3.3, the Waiara Basketball Association, building for our safety. Do you want to ask a question councillor Knox? I'll have that first. Thank you.
When we, when we look at that in community grants, we always look at their financials. You're asking for a bigger grant. We've got no idea of the financial position of the basketball association. And apparently they kept one of their leases on a monthly rollover. In the past, they've serviced a loan from the council. So why couldn't this give another loan? So rather than 80,000 upfront. I'm not against basketball. It's a great sport. They do it really, really well. I appreciate what they do, particularly younger people. But I think, you know, before you give money away like that, we've got to know what their financial situation is and whether they could, they could facilitate, they could pay a loan and we could loan it on their behalf.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Chair. Just clarify, this is not a front to the organisation. This is council undertaking works on the building.
So this is around structural safety upgrades that have been requested to make it compliant.
So it's been identified within the fire safety order of that building as a, a risk that needs to be addressed.
And is that a council that said?
Again, excellent. But my question is, you know, has, have they any ability to put some money themselves? How many councillors living beyond its bounds?
Just checking, does anyone have an answer for councillor Knox's question? Otherwise we'll take them on notice.
When we just, or when we discuss this one internally, there are some overall fire safety issues potentially that can be addressed out of the reason from this. So what begins has been identified for the Waiara Basketball Association building. It addresses fire safety at the location as a whole as well.
Is that space is used for other, other activities? Is that space is used for other, other activities as well?
The whole development of Jubilee Park, because we've gone ahead and built this asset, we're, we're, we're just required to, to, to make it building fire safe. And that request has been live since around two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen.
We're going to use the rainwater tanks that are currently at the show on them to the basketball stadium.
It'll be new, new tanks. There is a mains water pressure issue in the city. It means building fire safety is, is the methodology in which we achieve it is expensive due to those pressure issues. So you've got to create that infrastructure on site to get that pressure to meet all the codes. It's a, it's a factor that we're at the highest level currently submitting as we, we, we try and build development in this city. So to take councillor Knox's point, it's, it's a big factor in, in development and how we, we operate in this city through our, our expansion, which major utilities haven't matched, so it is a big issue.
That's Stupus.
They're talking about a master plan for that area. We're going to spend this money and redevelop it, are we going to lose all of that money to spend upgrading a water facility at the basketball stadium? Or can we wait to finally get a sports master plan for that area?
It's something.
The answer is no.
It's correct, it's something we grapple with quite strongly. How far development has already proceeded or progressed on Jubilee Park as to its matching utility capacity for that development? It's, it's an issue that we're going to have to address, but yes, the answer is no. In this instance, we can't continue with a non-compliant building. It's, it's a, it's a risk, a serious risk for council.
Excellent.
And just to add a little bit to that, fire safety crew have actually just done our training out there and the bill for the basketball stadium to be compliant is up to nearly two hundred thousand. So they will be putting the rest of that in, because that's all in-house in their building. This one is more infrastructure for outside to help with the fire hose. So as council are owners of the land, this is more the infrastructure for that. And with the lease rollover, a lot of our community leases have run out and we're all getting a month by month rollover.
Well, I get that month by month rollovers, but if the report had explained that we were spending money itself on the interior of the building, I wouldn't have asked the question in the first place, so I'm happy with the answer. Thank you councillor Pond.
Yeah.
Thanks for that information councillor Knox. And the answer councillor Pond. Right, so we, I'm looking for a mover, please here and second. Thank you. Councillor Simpson, seconded deputy mayor Stone. Thank you. Show of hands, all those in favour? That's Carrie, thank you. Right, thirteen point three point four, one food bank, express support and partnership proposal. Fantastic organisation, we all know. Incredibly important to our, to members of our community. So I'm asking for a mover, that's councillor Knox.
I'm happy to move it, but yes, I would like the amount changed to ten thousand. We have just almost given half a million dollars away looking after animals. We put out a paltry ten, paltry six and a half thousand to look after people and they've got five thousand two hundred clients in Weyland. So that should tell you something. So I'd like to make that ten thousand and if we, I would, I would have liked to send it even more, but that, we could, not totally do, for our too much largesse. I'll move it to ten thousand.
You're going to second that councillor, that's sorry, deputy mayor Stone for ten thousand dollars? Thank you. Okay. Right, I'm looking for a show of hands, all those in favour? That's Carrie. Thank you, reading forwards. Thirteen point three point five, the Weyland Public Library, customer conditions of use. I'll take that as read, it's very straightforward, so I think it's a good document. Someone to move that please, councillor Stupus, seconded councillor Westerman, thank you. Show of hands, all those in favour? That's Carrie, thank you. Right. Okay, so we go to, now what do we want to do about this point? CEO, thank you.
Very good. In relation to the sea conflict of interest that a number of councillors raised by virtue of being members of the Weyland show. Being a member of the show, society in itself doesn't create conflict, it's only those individuals who hold office with the organisation. So, and so councillors Santuzzi, deputy mayor Stone and councillor Westerman are able to stay.
Councillor Westman's, she's not part of this, there was food bank.
My apologies, but however, obviously councillor Pond, who's president, will need to vacate the chamber.
I'm happy for you to stay here if you want to, that's fine. If you just don't participate, thank you. All right, thank you there. Councillor Knox, very good.
Why didn't you charge them even for the use of the show grounds? I mean, it's a big event for Weyland, brings a lot of people to the, to our community as well. Why are we even charged in two thousand seven hundred and twenty years? Why don't we make a dollar, make more money into events at the show?
Very, very good. That's an interesting question councillor Knox. I suppose the question is where, where do you start and where do you finish with that, that, that sort of rationale? We've got many community groups that deliver public value to the, the community. And many of those community groups use community facilities. One of the challenges that we've got is that over many years, the arrangements that exist in relation to the lease terms that the different community groups have on their respective facilities is inconsistent and there's inequalities. So we've been working on the draft community facilities policy. We also have been working on a leases or licences framework. And what we're looking to do is to try and put a better determination on what public value is being delivered through community facilities and what is the appropriate contribution that different organisations contribute to the cost of delivering the facilities that ultimately benefits the community. So there's probably good reason to revisit the quantum of the lease. However, it really should be done in the context of all of our leases and licences and all of our facilities. And that's something that is being worked on as we speak.
Okay, goes on move it. Next councillor Knox, good question. Seconded councillor Simpson, thank you. Show of hands, all those in favour? That's Carrie, thank you. Thirteen point three point seven, the Surf Life Saving Building Upgrade and Forshore Master Plan, stage one. Do you have any conversation around this first to overtake this as being read? Have you got questions?
A quick question, ma'am. As the report goes on talking about the surf life saving and, and them getting on with the building, how much say does council have in the building's design, layout, architecture? Considering it seems to be heavily weighted in that the life-saving organisation will look after the whole building as to what involvement we actually have in saying we like it, we don't like it?
Do you want to speak to that?
Jump in, Jodie, if you think, but an enormous say really in, in, in terms of its design, its, its additions, if you like, beyond Surf Life Saving Club facilities for their purpose. So it's a huge say. And, and we're actually a lead driver of the entire project and how it interfaces with the community.
Thank you. Councillor Knox, any question?
Yes, I do have some questions. Some of them have been asked, we don't have any plans as yet. Surf Life Saving Club money is a grant. Does the Surf Life Saving Club have any money itself that can contribute towards the movement? What happens to the pod when the project's built? And.
Thanks, Jay.
I'll, I'll take on notice how much the Surf Life Saving Club have, but it's a nominal amount. As far as what happens to the pod, that'll be up to the elected member body of the time. It can, it can stay in play if we, if we see its value there, or it can shift to another location on the foreshore. We've had some potential proponents of it suggest where they'd like to see it move in the future. Obviously having some interest if they had to sign a lease, but really it's up for council to decide where, where it gets relocated to.
The only other thing that I have is I'm very nervous about committing more money that we don't have.
Of speaking, thank you.
Just one extra thing to, to add to the conversation is that we talk about the Surf Life Saving Club building and obviously they're a major functional contributor and will have a role to play in terms of determining the functionality to meet their requirements. However, consistent with our draft community facilities policy, we'll be looking to have a building that accommodates multiple users and provides multiple functionality. And the, the boat that's been allocated also does include the water play feature, which is, again, a key interface between the halves build of the, the heart structure of the building and the integration into the broader foreshore master plan. But I did want to emphasise that at some stage we need to move away from talking about the Surf Life Saving Club building, because it won't be a building solely for their sole purpose, that will be able to function out with the incorporated.
Just to add to that, we've actually had some real strong interests from those involved in maritime safety due to the telecommunications issues that are faced by being located beneath Hummock Hill. Coming down to where the current footprint of the Surf Life Saving Building is, that, that is entirely improved. And so that's been really positive.
Thank you. Right, so I'm looking for someone to move this recommendation please. Councillor Santuzzi, seconded councillor Stupus. Thank you. Show of hands, all those in favour? Thank you. That's Carrie. Right, let's go to. Operation Flinders, fantastic organisation and what they do for the youth, absolutely wonderful. So the recommendation there is that council endorses a five thousand dollar contribution per annum the next three years to support the young people to participate in this programme. Undeniably successful and absolutely wonderful. So councillor Pond, are you moving that?
Absolutely, I've seen firsthand the benefits of this programme. It's nothing but beneficial for the youth of our community.
Thank you. Deputy mayor?
I support those comments.
Seconding that, thank you. Right, ask for a show of hands, all those in, if you've got a question. Thank you councillor Knox.
Operation Flinders is fantastic, it's very worthy of support. But my concern is that they actually deliver to the people who are most at risk, or do they deliver to a level above them who are not quite so at risk? We're putting in five thousand, which is not a lot of money, but is, is that, is that particular programme going to be aimed at Weyland youth? Or is it going to be youth from elsewhere as well? From elsewhere as well, having Weyland youth will get to participate. And do we ever see anything written up on the outcomes and success stories?
I think we've got a report.
Yes. Yes, so thank you. Councillor Pond?
Yes, I've actually got a lot to do with this programme, not personally now, but when I was in my previous job. They definitely do handpick the children that need it the most. And the last lot of youth that we did send away, amazing outcomes have come from that with broken cycles. Those kids have gone on with support to do amazing things. We had a presentation here in chambers as well when they came back last time. And yeah, it, it's been absolutely fantastic and I can guarantee the last lot were definitely handpicked and it's been nothing but beneficial for all of their families. Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, just following on from there. I was at that presentation here and I was talking, presenting with some of them, and so I have no qualms at all about supporting them.
Thank you. I've got a mover into second, ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? That's Carrie. Four point one, we have side collection policy.
I'm hoping you'll move it, but I'm a lot closer here.
Right.
There is no mention in there at all, hard waste collection service, and that is an omission. I'd like to see that reflection.
Through the chair, thanks for saying it, councillor Knox. I thought I had seen something there, there was one, there's two.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
I'm sure I saw it, it's very hard.
I believe there's referencing that about the annual payments we can all get from our home. Pretty much a five by four title or something.
Okay, no problems at all.
I'm very well tonight, you don't need to bother.
No, 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 no business, it's role. Thank you. CEO?
Page two seventy five makes reference to the hard waste collection service.
Thank you. Right. Councillor Knox is moving that. Thank you, seconded. And deputy mayor Stone, thank you. Show of hands, all those in favour? That's Carrie, thank you. That was a, that was my, it's not, I've seen our last meeting. So fourteen point one, my list of engagements is up there. So thank you, so as you're aware, I'm not running again next year, just want to say thanks to everyone, it's been a good ride with everyone here.
We have to pass that.
Thank you. I feel very privileged to work with such a great bunch of, sort of, I'll go, yeah, so, you know, not, not seeing again, but what a great bunch of councillors and absolute credit to you all for how we've operated as a team. We're probably one of the best, if not the best in the state, and how we've got along, debated, discussed, but always stood up and been extremely respectful to each other when we leave this chamber and outside of this chamber. And that's something that is incredibly important, and I think it's incredibly important for the next council that comes into this chamber. That's how you get a successful council operating and that leads on into the community with successful outcomes. And we have achieved an awful lot in this last four years, huge amount. And we've also had to deal with, you know, GFG stuff and also COVID stuff. So for us to continue to function well and, you know, it's just a credit to all of you that sit here in the chamber and of course to all of the staff, you know, we're very fortunate, a very, very good organisation and it's always growing and, and getting better, that never stops. So thank you for that. And I'm very lucky to have been in this role with, with all of you, so you've made it easy for me too, so thank you very much. So in saying that, we have still got a couple more meetings to go, so it's not fair, well, you know. But I wish all the potential candidates for mayor and also for councillors the best of luck. And obviously, you know, nominations will be coming open soon, and so we encourage people in the community to get on board. It's an important role and why not want to have a voice about council, why not try and get on council and, and make a difference there? That's, that's when you can positively make some good changes. And it's always important to remain positive and respectful, that's why I'm five cents from it, so. So my engagements are there. Does anyone have any questions around what I have been up to as far as activities?
I haven't asked you a question for a few weeks, have I?
Well, actually, so deputy mayor Stone, would you be happy for councillor Knox to ask a question?
Yes, yes, certainly.
Thanks, I was going to second you.
I'm going to say no.
Maybe you had a summa tima, was that the connection with the Irish plant?
No. That was not in regards to that. Justin, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, I'll, I'll keep it at a reasonably high level, because it's obviously a confidential conversation, but it was about potential investment in the city. Looking across. conversation, but it was about potential investment in the city, looking across various development opportunities. So with a real focus on one housing.
Yeah. Of course, but thank you. Councillor Knox? Right, so we go back to deputy mayor, thank you, move that?
Thank you madam.
And councillor Knox, are you seconding that? Thank you. Ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? That's carried. Right. Item 15. I just have motion. Up on the screen there? Councillor Knox, are you moving that?
Move it, it's the seconded up again, stay to it.
Do I have a second? Councillor, sorry, councillor Westman, apologies. Do you want to speak?
I just, I just think it's important, we don't, we don't get reports like we used to be covering pretty seriously in our council. And usually libraries, we used to get reports in the library of hundreds of members, how many books were being borrowed and all sorts of stuff like that. We don't get any of that now, we don't have any of the libraries. I know we do get them occasionally, certainly not quarterly. We very rarely see them, just to visit the centre, maritime museum, childcare centre, hundreds of them occasionally. But all of those sorts of things used to be reported by months before the prime. And I guess we probably haven't had them now for the last four years. And I think an important stats for council, like the city's standards etc. If you need to react to something, you might want to bring something up to council and probably get some action taken somewhere. I think it's important council come forward. Yes, those sort of reports, the admin's always been put forward, it's too hard, we don't have the right on the software etcetera, etcetera. Back in the old days, we did have computer systems, we still used to provide those sort of reports. So leave it at that.
Excellent, I have a mover, I have a second there. Thank you, ask for a show of hands, all those in favour? Thank you. That's carried. Got a question on notice, councillor Knox has provided some of those, they're up on the screen. Do you want me to read that out?
There's one I'd like to mention, and that's Black Oak Cove. And I'm sure that if councillor Antonio, or councillor Antonio wasn't here, he'd be horrified because he was the one that introduced that claim four years ago now. And we weren't charging those people, we hadn't been charging those people. And I'm alarmed that we hadn't bothered them for over 140 years. But that people had three, one of four years. Something should have happened sooner. One of the reasons I brought these questions up is I don't know whether I'm going on with council or not. But some of these things looking forth after the track, never this moment they're going. So I thought some of these things should be brought up and written up. Where I raised them.
Thank you. So in regards to councillor Knox's questions, I'll take them as being sensitive and those councillors, you're comfortable with that? Thank you. So yeah, thank you. So I will ask for someone to move the debate. Please councillor Knox? Second to councillor Santuzzi? Show of hands, all those in favour? Thanks, that's carried. Bravo, thank you everyone. Any questions councillor Knox? Right. Go to item 17, questions without, I just.
Oh, yeah councillor Knox. Sorry to do this. I probably resolved this by an email, but it hasn't been had enough response at the chair. The airport, Kawaruna's position, which was recently advertised, I wanted to know, is that a new position? Has it been factored into the budget?
Chair, it is a new position. The position has actually been created from a couple of other vacancies. It was identified that the need at the airport was to a more senior level than what was being provided through the local government employees award. So the position has been through a formal classification process. And came up coming at that level six.
Close to what?
In terms of salary. So I don't, I don't check that.
So I've tagged that on notice to get that to.
It can say to me that the airport runs at a loss, people know that. And this drives it into further loss, all mainly from our community to subsidize the airport.
I just, just my own personal passion, so that was from two positions.
So there've been a couple of vacancies that were cut. And as a result of those vacancies, we have used savings from those vacancies to create.
So it's not actually adding any extra costs, it's actually just reallocating those positions. It's a position, isn't it? Okay. Any questions? The, councillor Pond?
I'd just like to know if council has any plan to reinstate the reconciliation action plan working group?
Thank you.
It's through the chair. We do have every intention of doing that. We know that our reconciliation plan is out of date. We've been in touch with Reconciliation Australia about what are the next steps. We cannot do a rollover rap, so we will need to reconvene a new working party. And we will be inviting those people who sat on the original working party to attend.
Do we have a timeframe for that? Because I've been asking for three years.
Can I take that on notice? Like it is, it is on the list to do and it is intended to have that meeting first convened before the end of this year.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. There are no other questions without notice? There are none. Thank you. Oceans without notice? There are none, thank you. Right. We will now have a break, so I'll ask someone to move that and take leave of meeting. Thank you deputy mayor, second to councillor Knox, show of hands, all those in favour? And we will reconvene in 20 minutes' time. Thank you. Thank you everyone. We will now move into confidential, so to go to the second part of our meeting. And I want someone to move that, be in case of thing. Deputy Mayor Stone, councillor Simpson, thank you. Show of hands, all those in favour? Thank you. And we go to. Thank you. So thank you, we now come out of confidential and the meeting. This meeting closes at seven twenty-two. But thank you. And on the screen you can see how I'm going to go. But also thank anyone from the other meeting tonight. Having interest, thank you and we'll thank you.